The time is now 9:31 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of June 12, 2012 is called to order. The first item is approval of agenda and order of priority. I have a motion, please.
I'd like to add, or maybe you do a motion first. Okay, then I mean, I support.
We support it.
Can we add a discussion about speaking height, so we're in the agenda?
Sure. What would you, any thoughts about where to suggest?
Just under, like, item H under discussion items?
Yeah. Does that work, Mertz?
Muscular height?
Do you want to do it before the minutes?
To have a discussion about, an update on the agenda.
Do you want to, I make it for the minutes?
Oh, I see.
Do you want to do it in the committee of the whole, or do you want to do it in the red zone?
It's what my energy makes.
Why don't we do it after, after, in fact, if you want, we can include it in, in my report and not defer to you, but why don't we do that? We'll put it on the report of the superintendent. Great. Any further? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Nancy Snyder, please.
Good morning. Welcome to the State Board of Education meeting. I'd like to introduce to you the State Board of Education members and people seated around the table. To my left is Mike Flanagan. He is the Superintendent of Public Instruction. He is the Chairman of the Board. To his left is John Austin. John's the President of the Board and he resides in Ann Arbor. Next is Cassandra Albrecht. She's the Board's Vice President. She resides in Rochester Hills. Next is Nancy Danhoff, the Board's Secretary from Lansing. Kathleen Strauss from Detroit. Paul Galbansky, Michigan Teacher of the Year for this year at his final State Board of Education meeting. When he's not here, he's at the Oakland Schools Career and Technical Education Campus Southeast in Royal Oak, teaching business marketing, management, and techni- and what? Technology. And across the table is Greg Tetter. He's from the Governor's Office. Next to him is Eileen Wiser from Ann Arbor. Next to her, Dan Varner from Detroit. Richard Zilee from Detroit, the Board's NASB representative. And next to me, Mary Ann Yarnd McGuire. She's from Detroit. She's the Treasurer of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mertz. By the way, not everyone got the memo, I guess. Kyle and I said we need to have our slides today and I noticed that the coverage sent some others. First of all, this is our, probably our favorite meeting of the year because we get to see a new Teacher of the Year and it's just an exciting time. We'll get to that in just a moment. Appreciate everyone getting here a little early for some of the photos with the Board and exciting day for us. We do have a little different border today because in order to preview the Teacher of the Year, which is our first item, we have a consent agenda item, which is really resolutions only related to Teacher of the Year. I have a motion, please.
I approve a move that we approve the consent agenda and the adoption of resolution honoring the 2011-12 Michigan Teacher of the Year and the adoption of the resolution honoring the 2012-13 Michigan Teacher of the Year.
Moved by Nancy, supported by Kathleen. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. So, the way we're going to start this is kind of traditional, which is that we, I'm going to introduce our current Teacher of the Year, who's going to kind of give us a recap. Paul has, has become a friend of all of ours and it's so exciting to have seen a CTE teacher for the first time in our history as a Teacher of the Year. I can't tell you how much I've learned by sitting with you and I know the Board and I feel that you have contributed so much to the discussion on issues that we just didn't always understand, Paul. So, thanks for your service. And being your final meeting, I know you have some remarks and probably as always you have some video or something like that, which have been very entertaining. So, I'd like to present, Paul, if you'd take over at this point.
Thank you, thank you very much. You know, as I talk with my students and I've had a wonderful opportunity to make several presentations this year, traveling throughout the state, throughout the country, you know, two of the most underutilized phrases in our language are please and thank you. And I think why it's very important that we continue to put that in the forefront and I'd ask that everybody here, please continue to make great things happen, whatever your role may be for our young people throughout our great state of Michigan. And I want to thank you for being a part of my life and for making this year truly an amazing experience. I have learned about all of the moving parts that are part of our educational system, from all of the work and effort that goes front with the Board here, along with Superintendent Flanagan and all the people here at the department. So, those are a couple of things that I think are very important and I'd like to share that with you. As Superintendent Flanagan said, we've done some technology. I've had an iPad this year that I've worked with and I've got my iMovie app and I have done some things. So, I'm going to put together or show you here a short video of a year in review, some of the highlights from this year. talking about this wonderful opportunity and experience that I've had so far this year as serving Michigan's Teacher of the Year for the 2011-2012 school year. I'm a Business Management, Marketing and Technology Instructor at the Oakland Schools Technical Campus Southeast, which is located in Royal Oak, Michigan. And I have the wonderful opportunity of being the first career and technical educator to be aware of this prestigious honor as Michigan's Teacher of the Year. The real focus of career and technical education is to make sure that we have our students college and career ready. And that comes in a variety of different ways. I think one of the key elements when we look at the career and technical education and the focus of it is we have to look at career and technical education in college, not as an either-or situation, but as an and solution. We have the academic rigor. We have the hands-on technical skills that the students learn through career and technical education and those need to be married together so that the students benefit from it. And I think more and more what it is, is a point of information. That's really what the key is, letting people know the wonderful opportunities for students through career and technical education. We talk about the three Rs, rigor, relevance, and then obviously relationships. And we've been very fortunate to tie that in with the Michigan Merit Curriculum. What we've been able to do, particularly in Oakland County, is our students who come to the technical campuses have the ability to earn 12th grade English, to earn Algebra II, to earn fourth math credit, all required of the Michigan Merit Curriculum for them to graduate from the, from the state with that particular diploma. And so, I think that that's very important and we've been able to do that for our students and it's a great opportunity as it fits and blends in and not be an either-or situation, but an and. It's really important, there's a speech that Secretary Arne Duncan gave in his Pathways to Prosperity, and he indicated that the goals of career and technical education, CTE 2.0, as he put it, should be that students earn a post-secondary degree or an industry-recognized certification and then land a job that leads to a successful career. That is exactly what we're doing. That's exactly what's occurring in my classroom through the Business Management, Marketing and Technology Program and through all the clusters that are available for students, whether it's transportation, health, medical, biotechnology, and the list goes on and on for what students are able to work in. And I think that's exactly where we're heading. And so, more importantly, as I indicated earlier, I think it's more, people need to be informed of the wonderful opportunities that are available. You know, tying back into what the federal directive is there, going into what we'll also meet with the Michigan Merit Curriculum, is those students need to have an online learning experience. I know particularly in our Business Management, Marketing and Technology Program at the technical campuses, we have students that take an online learning experience through a local community college. They earn 12 college direct credits while they're studying entrepreneurship and they leave with a certificate in entrepreneurship. So, what a great way to also get them ready to meet the needs of CTE 2.0, as Secretary Duncan views it, but also then for our students to get a leg up on the competition, if you will.
I'm Brooks Patterson, the Oakland County Executive, and I participated today in the Teacher/Business Leaders Exchange Program, today being Monday. And so, tomorrow, I guess Tuesday, have a dinner. I'm sorry, I can't be with you, I have a conflict in my schedule. But I did want to give you my impressions and reaction to the morning I spent at the technical campus as a guest of Paul Galbansky, the Teacher of the Year. It was a surprise. I knew about the technical campuses, the four of them are operated by Oakland Schools. I'm on the Oakland Schools Foundation that was instrumental in setting up this exchange program between teachers and business leaders. But I had no idea what to expect when I got there, when I, when I realized the, oh, the quality of the education being imparted on those campuses. It was incredible. The kids were extremely bright, enthusiastic in their presentation as we went from cluster to cluster. They were well-informed, articulate, polite. I can't say enough good things about the student body at the campus. The teachers could not have been more accommodating. I just think it's a, it's one of the darkest secrets we have in Oakland, the quality of this technical school education. We got exposed what's going on on those four campuses to the public so we can gender, I think, more and more support. I was so impressed. One young lady I met early on in my visit, I was ready to offer her a job to come work at IT for me, only to find out she's got a scholarship to the university. So, the, it was just an eye-opener. You can tell that I'm excited about the experience and I want to thank all those who brought this about and I want to thank Paul for your hospitality today. He's up to visit me. He really got to show it to the stick. My tour was, was pretty melvatoed by comparison to what I saw. I look forward to returning to the campus and bringing in my friends and some business leaders so they too can share this experience.
On February 1st, 39 states, 15,000 teachers, and nearly 2 million students participated in the country's first-ever Digital Learning Day. Michigan hosted the groundbreaking event at Donley Elementary School in Lansing.
Boys and girls, let's try to read these words with our fingers first. Oh, ca, uh, ca.
The state selected Donley because of its focus on reaching students through technology.
Choose a picture and tell us what it is. Okay, it's cone.
I'm very proud and pleased that Michigan is part of the first national day around digital learning that focuses on personalized learning and teaching.
Make sure you tell them what it is. Honor. And what sound does it say? Very good.
Teachers who use digital techniques like interactive smart boards, iPads, and online learning say their students learn basic concepts earlier in their education.
Children who normally would have started reading are starting to read soon.
The Alliance for Excellent Education, a Washington DC-based national policy and advocacy organization, spearheaded the effort to create awareness of schools across the country changing education with technology.
We're making history today. And so, as we have the stage set for Digital Learning Day, let us all begin this year and celebrate the year of the digital learner.
Paul Galbansky, an instructor at Oakland Schools, and Julie Swartz of Maple Valley Schools have been named the 2012 Michigan Teacher of the Year and Michigan Online Teacher of the Year. They say digital learning more accurately evaluates where a student ranks and gives more personal, individual instruction.
It gives a solid diagnostic of what the student already knows and then it gives them the prescriptive piece to say, these are the areas that you need to focus on. And so, then we narrow the training for those specific standards that they're working toward for the certification.
We're seeking to, to help kids become 21st century learners. You know, we want them coming out of high school, college, and career-ready. And I think digital learning, virtual learning is a key player in, in that happening.
They say the virtual classroom levels the playing field for students, erasing previous baggage, past failures, and preconceived notions.
It does take time, but you could see the impact that it has with the students, particularly on student engagement. So, if students are engaged, they're going to want to come and they're going to want to learn.
Hi, I'm Amanda Persico. I'm a second-year student at BMMT, Oakland Schools Technical Campus. I'd like to say thank you to all my teachers, Mr. Waters and Mr. Maple. A special thank you to Mr. Galbansky for presenting me with the Teaching at Board Scholarship so I can then further my education at the University of Phoenix with a major in Information Technology and with a concentration in System Security. Thank you.
Happy to tell you about a gifted educator who's been named Michigan's 2012 Teacher of the Year. He's the first recipient from a technical school to win the honor. Now, he's off to the nation's capital for the National Teacher of the Year event. Photojournalist Kent Saunders brings us his story.
Tucked in an industrial area of Royal Oak is the Oakland Schools Technical Campus Southeast.
Tomorrow, you have your article quiz.
You'll find high school students taking a wide range of subjects where they will learn career skills, earn college credits, and prepare for the future.
I know several of you have some questions.
You'll also find Paul Galbansky. It's his 17th year at the school. He teaches Business, Management, Marketing, and Technology. Helping and guiding students is the part of the job Paul loves.
To see young people, to work with them, and then see them go on to be successful, that's really what, what education is all about.
That love of teaching has helped him earn 2012 Michigan Teacher of the Year, a big accomplishment he shares with the staff at the school.
This really is celebrating what we collectively have been able to do for the students and more importantly, it's really representing all that's good in education.
His students call him Mr. G. and I asked them if they think he lives up to the honor.
I do. When, when I first came here, at first I kind of struggled with the, the curriculum, but he has been there for me since day one.
Even like the little things, you have probably, like, he'll come and show you how to do it step-by-step so that way you don't feel like confused or left out.
Mr. G will head to Washington DC next week to take part in a week-long recognition of the Teachers of the Year from across the country.
And the highlight of that is we get to meet the President of the United States at the White House.
The National Teacher of the Year will also be announced. It's been narrowed down to four finalists.
I am not in the final four, but I will tell you, this has just been a great experience and to be able to represent them as Michigan's Teacher of the Year has just been a fantastic opportunity.
In Royal Oak, Kent Saunders, Seven Action News.
What an honor. You know, congratulations to Mr. G tonight.
You can see his enthusiasm too. You can tell that the kids like that and they pick up on that. So, good luck with your trip to Washington. I'm sorry, he wasn't one of the four national finalists. It would have been great.
It would be a great honor though to meet the President.
First of all, I would like to congratulate Bobby Joe Kenyon, our 2012-2013 Michigan Teacher of the Year, as well as recognize David, Janet, and Julie for being outstanding educators. I would like to thank the State Board of Education, along with Superintendent Mike Flanagan, for allowing me to share my opinions and my views at each of the State Board of Education meetings this past year. I would also like to thank Barb Fardell, our Michigan Teacher of the Year Coordinator, for providing me with so many wonderful professional learning opportunities. I would like to thank my superintendent, Dr. Vicky Markovich, along with Mary Kay Augie and Tammy Brown, for allowing me to spend time outside of my classroom, traveling throughout the state, as well as throughout the country, shining the spotlight on career in technical education. Finally, I would like to thank my entire family, especially my wife Susan, for all of her love and support during this amazing journey as Michigan's Teacher of the Year. One final thought that I would like to leave with you today is a quote from the great teacher and legendary basketball coach, John Wooden. "You can't live a perfect day without doing something for someone who will never be able to repay you." That quote is what our profession as educators is all about.
So, Mr. G as the, Mr. G, as the students call you, would you please come on up?
Sure.
You're not off the hook. You have the whole meeting yet today to still give your advice.
Okay.
Well, Paul, as you know, we've, we've benefited so much from your participation and we've learned a lot. You've been a terrific ambassador for the power of great teaching and also reminder, as the video and your participation shows, of the importance of more students having the kind of rigorous career technical education that is a great pathway to the kind of exciting careers that we saw them building towards at your, at your campus and Pressbrooks, Patterson, and others. But I guess I'm most happy watching the video that the Avengers, I think, have another teammate. If our state is ever threatened, as we sometimes are, with dumbing down our vocational technical curriculum, you know, it's not our grandfather's Botec anymore. It is the exciting gateway to the kind of wonderful lives and careers. So, I'm glad that you will be there if we need you.
I will be there.
And you'll, you'll, we'll get Samuel Jackson to give you the call.
Okay.
Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, nice entree to the next part of our program. Appreciate the segue that you gave us with your last comments too, Paul. So, on, on May 17th, at Ottawa Hills High School in Grand Rapids, we had the privilege of making a surprise announcement, naming Ms. Bobby Joe Kenyon as the 2012-2013 Michigan Teacher of the Year. And first of all, Barb, would you join us at the table? And when you heard Paul acknowledge Barb Fardell, can I just say that Barb took this on in addition to all her other duties when we got cut back a number of positions last year and we, we lost the spot that Jean held for so long. And I just want to thank her. She's, she's made this thing so, as Paul acknowledged, and I can't tell you how much it's appreciated in-house also. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Looks like in the Jean tradition, you have, we have tissue coming out again, so.
I told, I wasn't going to get upset this year, get the least little bit emotional. And then I watched Paul's video and that did it to me. Thank you very much. So, I'm really, I'm here today to do, again, the best part of my job here at the Michigan Department of Ed and that's to introduce you all to our new Michigan Teacher of the Year. We've had our pictures already, so you, a lot of Board members, you've met her already and Paul introduced her. But first, I want to thank you, Paul, for a great year. You know, you say you never forget your first. I was my first Michigan Teacher of the Year that I wasn't.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending.
We had a great time.
We did.
And we learned in Dallas that once you're a Teacher of the Year, you are always a Teacher of the Year. And so, Paul, we expect to see you come back and visit us now and then. I know you're a great advocate for CTE and you'll continue to work in the, bringing CTE in the academic areas together.
Absolutely. And I shared with many of the Board members through some email, a new report that came out that dealt with Common Core, state standards, and career and technical education. So, we hope next year that we'll be able to continue to move that forward.
That'd be great. Thank you. Well, this year's program, we had just under 300 teachers nominated from around the state with seven of our regions sending in their finalists. So, that gave us 18 wonderful teachers to review their applications. And we had a committee that consisted of retired school administrator, a representative chosen by the MEA, and a former Michigan Teacher of the Year. Now, what I really missed this year was having a Board member. So, we're going to set the date especially early this year so that one of you will be able to fit it in your schedule or even two of you, whatever you'd like to do, to make sure that we have a representative from the Board on next year's interview panel. Now, right now, what I want to do is show you a short video that will just give you a little touch of, of the feeling of excitement that we had in Grand Rapids when we surprised Bobby Joe with the announcement that she was Teacher of the Year. And this was edited a bit.
You can see the dedication written on her face and on her classroom walls, telling her students to never give up.
I just want them always facing the kids. I totally believe in each one of those.
But Bobby Joe Kenyon will be the first to tell you that that's not easy to do in an inner-city urban school district like GRPS. For the past 14 years, the newly-anointed Teacher of the Year, who's Michigan Teacher of the Year, is Ms. Bobby Joe Kenyon. Has seen her fair share of kids just not come back to class.
It hurts. It's hard. It's hard to see when kids give up or you no longer see them on your attendance list and you don't know what happened to them or where they went. It's, it's terrible. It's hard.
And at Ottawa Hills, although its graduation rate of nearly 66% is higher than the district's average, it still lags behind the state by nearly 10 percentage points.
For this school to be at the bottom, basically, the very bottom, and to improve itself the way it has the last two years, this is really the story we need.
State Superintendent Mike Flanagan says Ottawa Hills has steadily improved in a lot of ways. It's off a national list of the lowest-performing high schools and its students have improved in every subject for state testing, but there's a long way to go.
My big philosophy is to teach these kids as if they're in any school, as if they are all going to Harvard, you know, just to give them the same opportunity that everybody else would and to teach them because they deserve it.
That's wonderful. Well, now, I would like to formally introduce you to Ms. Bobby Joe Kenyon, our science teacher at Ottawa Hills High School in Grand Rapids, our 2012-2013 Michigan Teacher of the Year. So happy to have you here. And also, I want to introduce with Bobby Joe today is her Superintendent of the Grand Rapids Public School District, Teresa Weatherall Neal. And her Principal Rodney Lewis. Jan Bar, the leadership coach that she's been working with for, where are you, Jan? There you are, for a number of years. And, did Lance make it? Oh, her fiance is running late. Maybe we'll get to see him a little later. Her mom and dad, and I'd like to point out that Bobby Joe's mom and dad are both in education. Her dad was a science teacher in the Cadillac area for 37 years, is it? I'd like to stand real quickly, acknowledge her dad, obviously just quick steps. All right, this is your chance to say a few words about yourself, Bobby Joe, and give us a taste of what's to come in the next 12 months.
Thank you, Barb. First of all, I'd like to thank the State Board of Education, Superintendent Mike Flanagan, and the Selection Committee for allowing me this wonderful opportunity to represent the hard-working and dedicated teachers throughout the state as the Michigan 2012-2013 Teacher of the Year. I'm truly honored by this. There are many wonderful and supportive people in my life and I'd like to start out by thanking my Principal, Mr. Lewis, for his nomination. He came to my room last fall to tell me and I remember him saying, "I think you could go all the way. I think you have a great shot at this." Me, on the other hand, I really never thought that I would be sitting here. So, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for believing in me and helping me grow in areas beyond my own classroom. And also, thank you to Ms. Bar, who is our school consultant and the students call her the short, nice, gray-haired lady that- her the short, nice, gray-haired lady that follows around Mr. Lewis. You have been a wonderful support to me as well as our school, and you deserve all the good things happening in your life. Superintendent Neal, thank you for your leadership as you take your new role, and for listening to the teacher's voice, which is the first thing that you have done. We are excited to move forward with you, GRPS, and I look forward to representing our district and letting the community know what wonderful teachers and quality education we give. After the announcement at the assembly, I've already received many positive feedbacks and comments. A grandma getting up and dancing as she heard the news on the television. Teachers telling me they stand a little taller now and tell people where they work. A parent who wrote me an email saying that she's now bragging about her school to people who usually don't listen to her. And of course, the students, who are more than excited and proud of their school. Working 16 years with Grand Rapids Public Schools has been so rewarded, rewarding, and I can imagine moving or leaving this district. Teaching in inner-city schools has a lot more challenges than other areas, but it also has the greatest reward, and that is why I choose to stay. Students in these schools, as I've said, deserve great teachers. All this is wonderful, but where did it really start? You know, everyone has their story of their favorite teacher that influenced them, and I have a story as well. However, mine has influenced me my entire life. It is my father. He has taught science for 37 years in Cadillac before retiring. Growing up, I saw what it takes to be a teacher, all the rewards as well as all of the struggles and frustrations. Growing up, I also developed my love of science. I spent time collecting insects, naming trees, looking through the telescope, and of course, my favorite thing, getting to dissect leftover specimens from his classroom. I knew early on, by the age of five, they tell me, that I wanted to be a teacher, and that, and I played that role whenever I could. I'm sure my brother and sisters have appreciated all the times that we played school at home, minus the scientific taste testing, which of course had include bitter. I always hear about that. So thank you, Dad, for your influence. The love of what you do has made a love of teaching in me that I value and cherish every day. And no matter how proud you are of me at this moment, I am just as proud to be your daughter. I also thank my mother, who knows that I followed Dad in my career, but you did just as much for me. You instilled in me my strong values, my desire to make a difference in people's lives, and my humbleness. You also gave me that phrase that hung in our house, "Anything worth doing is worth doing well," which I always hear in my head, though sometimes I don't know if that's a blessing or a curse. But nonetheless, it has gotten me to where I am today, by teaching me to put my heart into everything that I do. I also want to thank you for, thank the love and support for my future in-laws, Dave and Jeannie Van Yorden. Dave was also an educator for over 30 years, and I look forward to the day when you'll officially become my in-laws. Thank you to my sister Kyrie Jo, who is my best friend and unending support, my nephew Kaden, who just shared the feeling of surprise assembly that I had felt when he received the sixth-grade Citizen of the Year Award. And to my sister Sarah Jo and brother Jamie, who live too far away to be here but who are watching it via web streaming. At last, but certainly not least, my significant other Lance Miller, who is my biggest cheerleader and supporter. I remember all those times throughout the year that you wrote notes to me saying, "I miss you," as I was in my room working. Well, from what I've heard, I have a feeling that you haven't seen anything yet. Your love and support means the world to me, and I know that this is not a journey I'll have to go through on my own. Thank you. Every day, I am excited to be able to educate, inspire, challenge, and celebrate success with my students. But to know that I will get to branch out beyond my own classroom and school to do these same things with other educators, that's exciting. I look forward to the adventures, as well as the challenges that this year will bring, and I hope that it can have as much of an impact as Paul and the previous Michigan Teachers of the Year have. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Bobby Joe. And Bobby Joe has a lot of really, um, exciting things to look forward to this year, and one of them is working with Mimic Insurance and, um, a number of things that Mimic provides for you. And with that, I'd like to introduce Pam Harland, who is here from Mimic Insurance. Would you want to stand just a minute, Pam? Mimic is going to be providing a car for Bobby Joe. Um, they also will be giving, or did already give $1,000 to Grand Rapids Public Schools, and they'll also be providing, uh, presenting checks to the three finalist schools in the fall. So we really, really appreciate all the support that Mimic Insurance has given this program over the years, so thank you. Um, and now we have a resolution to present to you, Bobby Joe. Superintendent and, um, Mr. Austin, are you going to be doing that? You wanna?
You can go down.
Sure. Or meet in the middle.
Yeah.
Bobby Joe, congratulations on behalf of the board. We welcome you and look forward to your help and participation. You know, you are the representative of great educators, and we take your voice and perspective very seriously. We do our best here to try to make good decisions about education policy and practice, but you are the both reality check and the guide for how we can better do that. So thank you, Bobby Joe. Congratulations.
And Superintendent Flanagan, if you'd like to come down to this end and present our plaque to Superintendent Neal, where are you? Oh, you're at the end there. Before you score.
For the school, for every place of honor that you think it should, it should be.
Hi, thank you. Well, now I'd like to introduce our three state finalists. We really had, um, an enjoyable time this year with our interviews. We had some great teachers, um, and so in no particular order, uh, first is Ms. Julie Morgan, and she'd like to stand. Mrs. Morgan is a high school social studies teacher from Romeo Engineering and Technology Center in Romeo Community Schools, and she's here with her husband David Morgan and Joan Dudick, the superintendent of Romeo, and the superintendent of Romeo Community Schools, Nancy Campbell. And thank you very much. And secondly, we have Mrs. Janet Holmes, who teaches first grade at River Oaks Elementary in Dearborn Public Schools, and she's here with her husband Larry Holmes, and she's, uh, also with her is her Superintendent of Dearborn Public Schools, Brian Liston, and did your principal, Ava Nash, all make it? No, okay.
It's our last full-day school.
Oh, well, doing what he's supposed to be doing, right? Well, thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, is David Scott Emiot. Did I say it correctly?
Yep.
And David teaches math at East Kentwood High School, at Kentwood Public Schools. He's accompanied by his wife Heather. Where's Heather? There she is. Hi, Heather. Um, and the Superintendent of Kentwood Public Schools, Scott Powell.
Paul Chesky.
Paul Chesky. I knew I would mess that up. And his principal, John Finoe. Thank you very much. I think it goes without saying that they are all really an inspiration to us and, and make the work we do here meaningful by being able to meet some of these great teachers. So, right now, I'd like board members to come up and present our finalists with their pin. Thank you. So finalists would like to stand right here, and we also have Bobby Joe.
Yeah, please.
There's a lot of board. Bobby Joe, you come up here.
For audience members, we did formal pictures before the board meeting today, so that's, that's why, um, this presentation's taking place this morning.
I know my colleagues would wanna say a word or two to each of you, but for Janet, Julie, and David, I know it's, um, you're, you're a co-equal, um, representative of great teaching in this state. I know it's a little bit performing to not be the Teacher of the Year, but the good thing is you don't have to sit through state board meetings. So, uh, view it as a blessing, guys, but there's so many great educators in this state, and it's a great tribute to you as a professional, as a finalist, and I hope you'll take some mental satisfaction and renewed energy from, from your collection here. And thank you for, for the work you do.
Thank you.
Can't you wanna pin somebody up here?
Sure, I'll be happy to pin somebody. That's for Julie. I'd like to present you with our Teacher of the Year, Emma Lee Carroll.
One of the things that we, uh, how much enjoy chewing with this is that it takes a circle of love and support to share that pride, and you're serving to all of our special values, pride, and, and, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I'm so glad, I'm so glad you do this, because you give us a chance of really telling people and on television and on web streaming. We have great teachers, and we have great students. I get so upset because there's so much negative crap, media, and people talking about the bad school system, we have to change everything. I think we have terrific public communities, and terrific, I would say, as a teacher. And, uh, thank you, and, and...
Thank you.
And then finally, for the case of... Congratulations. And I think now, if, if the teachers and their families want to go out to the back, if there's any extra pictures, we'll take them out there.
And Barb, may I mention just one thing before you all leave and we transition? Uh, board members, please, you're welcome to sit.
No, board members can stay.
You can take your seats. I just wanted to mention that, Bobby Joe, before you leave, first of all, you can see what's expected next year, that production is a hard one to beat. But I, 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 I just wanted to say that, um, kind of in the spirit of what Mrs. Strauss said, my daughter's a, a teacher here, a public school teacher, and it's, I think our teachers are underappreciated in this country right now, and we want you to know that you just represent, uh, the best, of course, but what, we have 100,000 teachers that are just doing an excellent job every day. They work hard at this. I think it's, uh, it's something, I watch my daughter and realize with 180 kids a day, I don't know how she does it. And, uh, on behalf of all of us, we appreciate that. And then in Bobby Joe's case, you know, some of you know, I was a New York City kid, and I really appreciate teachers who will stay with districts that have some of the greatest challenges. I mean, there are kids who haven't been read to. There are kids that have some challenges, uh, because of poverty and other things, that I think it's really a testament to you, and I appreciate, we're gonna learn a lot, 'cause we're featuring and trying to work with our so-called PLA schools this year that, that you have, you and your colleagues have succeeded in, together with the Principal and Superintendent of, of moving your school along with student achievement gains that are just remarkable. And, uh, I think we're gonna have a perfect opportunity to interact with you this year and get your advice on how to make that work statewide with all 4,000 schools. So thanks so much for everyone attending, and as Barb said, you're welcome to transition, uh, you're welcome to stay also for the full day if you'd like. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Pretty much on time. This is going very well, so, uh...
I think the last word.
Yeah. I do, I do wanna quote our board president, that the rest of us who have to sit through entire board meetings for a full year, that, uh, some of the other, and that folks won't have to. But today is really, it just started out exciting, and we're just building on that. And I'd, I'd like to invite down, uh, Dr. Covington from the EAA to join us at the table with his colleagues, who we'll introduce in just a moment. And please just join us, and as we, someone could, could grab the doors for a moment. Thank you. Appreciate that, Paul. Yeah. Service leadership, servant leadership. We like that, Paul. Greg, we'll tell the governor you've got that going for you also. So, just by way of introduction, what's that? Okay, I won't anymore.